I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's four o'clock, August 1st, 2016. Let's rise for a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have called orders for a shandy roll call.
Mayor Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
There are no awards and proclamations. There is time for a citizens forum. If anyone would like to present for anything that is not on the agenda, you'll have five minutes. Just give us your name and your address for the city clerk.
Patrick Harrington, 100 South College in Salina.
Okay, Mr. Harrington.
I joined a study session last week, and you were discussing special assessments for development of new housing. And I wanted to make some comments about it before it gets too far in, and you'll just, you'll know how I feel. The first thing I wanted to do was explain a logic, an equation in logic was there's equals, and then you put a slash through it, and that means not. So equals not, right? So growth does not equal success, equals not, right? Does not equal homes and does not equal increase in housing values. Consider these in with this concept. Increased land sprawl does equal higher travel, more gas, more cars, more maintenance on our roads. Increased housing equals more use of our water, more waste to process, more trash, cities' cost to process and waste that to landfill or whatever that waste is. More homes equals less attention and opportunity to those who need upgrade, increasing blighted areas. More sprawl equals establishment of new businesses, more building again, and increases in provisions of the city. So the waste in the sewer and the water, electricity, the personnel, all those things. More houses equals short-term increases in jobs for some workers, but many of which don't even live here. They come in and they're part of the contract team, they build, and they leave. More use of commodities that are not from here or made from here. So we truck in stuff from somewhere else, and that becomes a part of a home. More housing increases the continuation of all the above and needing more to get less out of a community or in our community. More housing means more unsold, unaffordable homes. Now we have a surplus of those vacant and unoccupied and unsold. And more development does not make a better community. It doesn't increase our community at all. Jobs equals some good, steady, low-paying jobs in businesses that benefit out-of-state corporations that take that money away. So more services at the sprawl at the end of the, at the other side of town where the new businesses are going to come away are going to be corporations that aren't here in Kansas. So not necessarily good for us. They use our local resources, our water, our people, our roads, and they get a bargain price because the money doesn't stay here. So also, costs paid by the city and the county are great for the landowners and the developers, but the return to the city is not realized for many years, and the cost to maintain the older provisioned items increases. We'll soon need new water processing facilities with more capacity. We'll soon need more trash processing equipment. Everything grows as the town grows. So the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. And the landowners are the needs of the few, the construction companies, the profits, the greater 1% of the population. And essentially, I see a special assessment as a city donating money to these companies that are going to build. And the provisions to the large landowners, they can't afford to build what we don't need. And so they come to the city and they look for provision for special assessment money. I don't feel it's fair for the north side taxpayers to pay for the development of the other end of the town. And I live on the north side, so, and as many people do. The city should not be seen as a partner with any developer. And the statement, "This is how we've always done it in the past," is just an excuse that allows good old boys to continue to enjoy the lifestyle and the privilege without the risks that the rest of us have to endure. The developer's risk is having a home that may not sell right away. Just because you build it does not mean they will come. That's just tough luck. This denies success, growth, and prosperity to middle-class people, and the assessment process also means tough luck to the city. We wait to get paid back for that, those special assessments. I have a challenge, I'd add a test. If you change the name of the develop, Pigeon Ridge, to Bob Smith Developer, it kind of sets the truth for you. It's Bob Smith Developer, or Bob Smith Condominiums, or whatever the name of that person is, it's not Pigeon Ridge anymore, it's Bob Smith Contractor, or it's Bob Smith Landowner. People would see where the money is actually going. And the Pigeon Ridge may not be as glamorous, or Bob Smith may not be as glamorous, but Bill Smith is the truth. Makes sense. Finally, any conflict of interest can be seen when a member of a government in the city of Salina has connection to redevelopment in a number of ways. This would include realtors, construction companies, lawyers, title companies, surveyors, plumbers, landscapers, all benefit. And I have two suggestions finally. Needs assessment before housing permits for developers have to be completed. Do we need housing? Do we need it? Is there vacancies? Are there, is a $300,000 house affordable for a lot of people? No. Is a $300,000 house going to get sold in Salina? Maybe, but somebody's going to be pretty burdened to keep that up. And if they lose their job, that house is back on the market or repossessed, and now it's a burden of a bank. So this is, the risks are not all shared. And I say it's the duty of each member of government to recuse themselves from the entire process if any family member, no matter how distant the relation seems, will benefit in any way from this development. So any appearance of impropriety must be considered when you look at a assessment that's going to be provided to a developer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Anyone else? Anyone else going, going, gone? Okay, let's move on to item five, public hearings.
5.1, comments on the proposed 2017 budget.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Any comments on the budget? Opportunity to comment on the budget. Okay, public hearings closed. We'll go on. And send agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 25, 2016.
I move approve the minutes of July 25, 2016. Second?
The minutes for July 25, 2016 have been moved and seconded and discussion about it. Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Seven, administration.
Item 7.1, first reading, ordinance number 16-10845, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Regional Airport and Airport Industrial Center.
Okay. Is that yours?
Yes, I'll be taking that, Mayor. That's all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Salina Airport Authority has been with us since 1965 and was created on the basis of enabling legislation adopted by the state legislature that same year. And in putting that enabling legislation in place, they provided that the airport authority could issue its own bonds, but built in the provision and what brings us here today is that if the airport authority board determines by resolution that they wish to issue those bonds, that resolution is then delivered to you and is subject to your review and approval. There's three ways that you can respond to that request. It is your prerogative to disapprove it if that would be your wish. The second is to unconditionally approve it, which determines the matter, and the airport authority is then authorized to proceed with the issuance. Or to approve it on the basis that would prompt publication of a notice and essentially the opportunity for petition and referendum. On July 20, the Board of Directors of the Airport Authority did adopt a resolution indicating the intent to issue bonds in the amount of $648,220. And the purposes for which those would be utilized are certain capital improvements, capital improvement projects at the Salina Regional Airport and the Airport Industrial Center, including the rehabilitation of Taxway E, the relocation of Taxway A, holding position at runway 35, and the rehabilitation of runway 1735. And I assure you that Airport Authority Executive Director, Tim Rogers, is here today and can certainly elaborate on those projects far better than I can. But, so you know that the bond issue has been developed with the assistance of the authority's public finance advisors, George K. Baum and company. And also, serving as bonds counsel will be the firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell, the same firm that assists the city with bond issues as well. You might, and others might be interested in knowing, as far as the fiscal aspects for the city, it's clear under statute that the general obligation bonds of the authority do not constitute a debt or obligation of the city, nor do those bonds count toward the city's indebtedness. So again, the options for you today are the denial of the request, the unconditional approval of the request, or the approval in such manner that would prompt the potential for petition and referendum. And as I mentioned before, I'm sure Mr. Rogers would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any, any questions of Mr. Rogers? Would you like to say a few things about your bond?
I know you still have a busy agenda, even though it's a short agenda, there's always a lot to visit about on your topics related to some of the downtown projects, so I'll be brief. Again, the total amount of the bond issue, once the issuance costs are taken into account and a rounding up to get to a market number, a market where you can easily issue the bonds, it'll be $657,000 for the total issue. Again, Taxway Echo, Taxway Alpha, the projects that will be funded by some $255,000, $260,000 of the bond issue will be actually 10% matching funds for a federal grant that will be in the amount of $2.3 million. The total project for Taxway Echo, Taxway Alpha, is $2.55 million. And so we are issuing the temporary, the geo-bonds in the form of temporary notes to fund that project. The runway 1735 slurry seal that you see on a diagram on your, at your seat, that is a 100% locally funded project. We did apply to KDOT for a Kansas Airport Improvement Program grant to share 50% of that cost. That grant was not awarded, so we would be doing that project 100% local funds in the, and that's in the amount of $397,000 total cost for that project. The intent by issuing temporary notes for, within the next three years, to go ahead and structure the airport authority's revenue and operating revenue and mill levies so we can repay these temporary notes within the term of the issuance, which is a three-year term on the temporary notes. So that is the intent as far as the temporary financing. And no, the intent is not to turn this into a long-term obligation as we would into a long-term general obligation bond. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners may have, Mayor.
Any questions?
Nope.
Any questions?
Just out of curiosity.
Yes.
You're working on the south 7,500 feet of runway 35. Does that mean that the north half is in better shape?
Yes, exactly. The north half, the north portion was overlaid within the last six, seven years. And the 7,500 feet to the south is our oldest pavement on the runway, so the slurry seal will buy, you know, three, about three to five years, three years, until we are in line for a federal grant to fund that overlay, that mill and overlay with 90% federal funds at that time. And that is part of our, the airport capital improvement program that's on file with the FAA.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-10845.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve on first reading, ordinance number 16-10845, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Regional Airport and Airport Industrial Center.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading, ordinance number 16-10845. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Item 7.2, consider authorizing the city manager to engage Stifel as the bond underwriter for star bonds associated with the downtown redevelopment star bond project.
Okay, Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, there is a major potential redevelopment project for your downtown that we're all, we've all been working pretty tirelessly to commence. You've taken multiple actions leading up to that. You have created both a star bond district and a tax increment finance district. The STAR stands for sales tax revenue, so for those who don't know that. And there is initiative in the downtown for voluntary petition to create a community improvement district as well to complement all of that. You have set the public hearing dates for the project plans associated with the star bond and the TIF districts, and that's coming up here in about three weeks, where you'll have the public hearing on that and have the opportunity potentially to approve those project plans, if you'd like to do that. There are other multiple steps involved, and one of them, as we deal with the bonding, the first thing is that at this point, the, on the star bond piece or the sales tax piece is the only piece in which there's bonding attached to it. And I say bonding, it's potentially bonding if that's what's eventually approved. With the tax increment finance and the CID or Community Improvement District, there is no bonding. Those are intended to be pay-as-you-go in accordance with the plans. So the bonding focus is with the star bond piece. One of the pieces to that, next, or the next task, I guess, is to engage a bond underwriter. And I'll skip ahead real quick before I get into that. The next step after we do that, which will come very soon, will be to engage a third-party consultant that will review the revenue projections, and those are what we call the conservative third-party review. And we need to have the bond underwriter chosen not only to work with us as we get forward, move forward with negotiating a development agreement and thinking about bond, bond structure, bond timing, and all those things, but also to provide us with input on the company to actually provide the revenue projections. They typically work fairly hand-in-hand. So the action today is to authorize the city manager to engage Stifel. Just to give you some background, this is a, what we would consider to be a professional service, at least initially, and it certainly leads to, again, the full underwriting of bonds. We're very early in what that might be and what that might look like, but staff conducted what we call a request for qualifications process where we invited, with the help of our financial advisor, George K. Baum, and Roger Edgar, who has worked with us for years. City staff solicited from companies. We had three interested companies, all of which are very, very good and very competent in, with municipal bonds. What we did look for is a company that has a solid reputation in the market, because ultimately, it's about placing bonds with investors. And we looked for a company that we felt gave us the best edge with regards to a bit of a creative bonding solution, not knowing if we're talking about a government-backed scenario, a private placement scenario, or a combination. And we don't know at this point because it's way early in the process. So we wanted to have someone who could really help us through all the complexities associated with that. And as we looked at the three, Stifel, Nicholas, and Company Incorporated, otherwise known as Stifel from St. Louis, Missouri, stood out. We believe that they have, have actually underwritten the most issuances with these types of projects compared to any of the others. They do have a very, very solid reputation. It's one in which our committee of, which included me, the deputy city manager, and the finance director, as well as our financial advisor, feel extremely comfortable after conducting telephone interviews with each of the three finalists. We feel that they are the most competent for this particular potential bond issuance. What we've done is attach the engagement letter, and it provides the basic terms, but one is, is they would certainly serve as a bond underwriter, following all related laws. And when you're in the bond issuance, there are a lot of legal aspects to that. The, provides for the typical fee schedule based on the bond issuance type. We don't know what that is yet. And the bonds purchased by developer would be 0.8% of the total issuance. Investment grade rated bonds, 1.25%, and non-rated bonds, 2.25%. There's some additional compensation for third-party independent legal counsel as needed. We don't expect that to be a significant cost. This, the term is through the financing unless terminated by either party, and there's no cost to the city by entering into this if no bonds are issued. And that's typically how the bond underwriting costs are applied. And then they have a specific conflict of interest disclosure. You probably read and thought it was interesting where they say, "We have a conflict." And that's typical with bond underwriters, they have to put that in there because of how things are regulated and admit that because of their role. We did, as courtesy, provide the recommendation to the Salina 2020 group as we continue to try to work and partner with them, and they're very comfortable with this company. With that said, we were very independent in our selection based on the competency of the, of the bond underwriting company. Again, as I mentioned, from a fiscal note, there are no fees unless the bonds are issued at this point in time. And as we look at our strategic plan, we do think it helps us redevelop the downtown, which is a big part of goal number one, and giving, providing the highest quality of service, services, which is what we look for in this. And then goal, that's goal three and goal five, we're addressing specifically downtown being thriving and vibrant. So we have a couple of options, obviously, pretty obvious options. Authorize the city manager to engage Stifel as a bond underwriter for the downtown redevelopment projects or, project, or not to do that at this time. And again, as with the actions leading up to this point, this included does not obligate the city commission to do a project if at some point we're moving forward and there's a reason we wouldn't want to. You certainly have the discretion, but as we continue to plan for a redevelopment project, this is a piece we need to have in place. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, staff? When I first was perusing this, I thought it was a mis-type, Stifel.
Yeah. Yeah, S-T-I-F-E-L. I would look at and say probably Stifel, but they pronounce it Stifel.
Probably Stifel.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions in regard, in regard to this, and I have to admit, when I saw this and saw the G, M, F, MSRB, GS7 rules and all this stuff, I mean, I actually learned a little bit. But I have a couple of questions about, because quite frankly, the G17 rules, some of those disclosures kind of make you a little bit nervous, especially when you read that they don't have a fiduciary duty to us. I'm assuming that they have that fiduciary duty to the investor. Is that sort of the, is that the nature of the beast? Is that?
Yeah, I mean technically speaking, they don't to us. Practically speaking, they're still, they have to be involved in all of that. But they have to, the point of that disclosure is to, just to completely eliminate any conflict, and really, it's to eliminate the possibility that they might hide the potential for a conflict, and so all parties are aware of that.
Right, and so that would be more towards, if this thing went toward a negotiated sale versus a competitive sale?
Pretty much so, yeah.
Okay. And that's, that's kind of leads to my next question, and, and that is, is on the, when I was reading the disclosure concerning the underwriters' compensation, there, you know, I can understand the investment grade, you know, the price, the issue price, you know, based on the issue price or compensation based on all that. What can you explain about the part that says, "Bonds purchased by the developer, 0.8%"?
Those, if that, if that is part of the structure in the end, those would be considered a private, one approach to a private placement type of bonds, and there's a lot less work associated with that when it's, in essence, the terms are negotiated versus like a public issuance. And so I believe when you look at their rate, they would expect that their time and costs associated with that form of an issuance would be quite a bit less than the other two that they've included, the, less than the investment grade rated bonds where there's a rating. And when we say rated, that's when you think of the bond rating agencies, Moody's, Standard and Poor's, those types of agencies, where Moody's organization, I believe, is correct. But that's when you think of having bonds that are out there, public sale and rated, and then also there are non-rated bonds, but in a, in a form and structure a little bit different than the ones that would be purchased by the developer. So technically speaking, all three options are out there and, or potentially out there for consideration, and quite honestly, we would work with our full project team to try to figure out in the end, not just the amount and the timing and all those, but the structure, which is what we're talking about right here.
Okay, and so, the latter part of that is where they kind of mentioned that, the, at least is where I had underwritten that they are presented with a conflict of interest, except I couldn't quite, I couldn't quite figure out exactly what they were talking about on that. I mean, I'm not well-versed enough in going, okay, now exactly where are they, what are they trying to say here? So, as best you can, what exactly are they saying here?
Well, keep in mind, they have a few roles, and one of them is, in essence, put the bonds in the hands of the investors. That's the end result of what happens here. You have, first of all, you have different payment approaches. So, for example, we say non-rated bonds are 2.25% versus the bonds purchased by developer at 0.8. So which of these do they make the most money at? Well, presumably, non-rated bonds, if the issuance amount is equal. So there's an opportunity to recommend an option that potentially they would make more money, and I think part of that is, is because in the bond underwriting, kind of the profession or the industry, there, no matter what they do, there's opportunities to provide recommendations and consultation with regards to bond issuances that potentially look like they're benefiting themselves versus, in essence, us, the client. That's where that rule comes into place, and what it is, is to tell us to be totally aware of their role so that we can, we know what the relationship is and how we need to address it as a team. So we're always thinking about that. But that's, in essence, one example of where that could be. And so, probably the best example of the application of that, I defer to Greg's knowledge on the bond issuances, if he has any other thoughts, or Michelle Myers, they can throw that in, but to me, that's the one thing that really jumps out.
Okay, there, and just according to this rule G17 on here, about the disclosures, I'm not, it didn't look like they had disclosed that they have any existing relationships with any parties of this, of our project. Is that, would that be pretty clear and accurate, an accurate statement? They don't have?
Let's see, I want to make sure I'm looking through their letter here. I'm not aware that they have any active relationships, and they shouldn't have in this case because they typically provide services to municipalities and other governmental entities that would issue bonds, so they should not have.
And we've never used them before?
No.
Okay. All right, and then just one general question, and that is, because we have talked about this, I don't know how much publicly, but I know that it's, the bonds already, always come up as a question of how you're going to finance these things, and so maybe not in a direct form, but... And so, maybe not in a direct form, but now that, now that we are talking about multiple avenues for marketing these bonds, what would generally be the necessity for taking them to public placement versus a competitive, in the competitive market?
The biggest difference is really the issue's probably more of rated versus unrated. In a private placement, you're not going to have a rating. It's a negotiated placement. Here's what happens in a private placement, the investor would have more risk. The reason is, is because the government wouldn't back the bonds. We have the option, we could have backed bonds. They're like general obligation bonds, but they're not general obligation bonds. But they do kind of engage the full faith and credit if we should go that way. And so, in that particular case, the investor has much less of a risk, but we take on the risk because if we put our full faith and credit, and what that means is, is that if the revenues don't produce enough, well, if the revenue production from the projects in the district isn't enough to support the debt service, the debt service still has to be paid. Technically speaking, in a private placement situation, that's not government-backed, the government has the choice. I'm not saying we would do this because I wouldn't recommend it, but we do have a choice to walk away from it if it doesn't produce, if we wanted to do that. And so, it's about where the risk is placed. And then because the risk is higher on private placement, the interest rates are significantly higher. And we know, for example, you just had a geo-bond issuance not long ago in the 2 percent range, which is really good. But if you're talking about private placement and private risk, that could be as high as, I'm going to say 6 percent, maybe even higher, but somewhere in that range is what we think it could be. And so, then there's a weighing too of, well, what is the, well, how much, ideally, if the payment risk isn't an issue, you say to yourself, which option gives us the most bang for the buck? In other words, do you want to use your money spending it on interest or on principal?
Right.
And principal means project. Ideally, it's project, but in order to do that, you have to take on the government-backed risk piece, which gives you a lower interest rate and allows more to go to the principal. And that somewhat reduces the overall risk too, because if you're talking about the same issuance amount, you're talking about a total payment that's less. In other words, if someone wants to buy a house and the house is $150,000, one person gets to buy it with what's 4 percent interest and the other person's going to buy it 10 percent. The person who's going to pay more at 10 percent interest has more risk because at some point, if something goes wrong in that timeframe, they have more money out, they might not be able to make that payment, which if your payment's a little bit less because your interest rate's lower, you might be able to withstand that downturn a little bit better. So, those are all the things that we, that we weigh is the, the impact of how much you buy, the potential risk of repayment, the total bond issuance amount and total payment amount really, and all those factors in there. So, those are the differences.
Okay. And so, being that this project has kind of been, will not only go through several more processes on our part to determine what the adequate sizing is and bonding, et cetera, through our council as well, but just from a general standpoint, if, if this project, because, and it's gone through a state process too of determining eligibility and
Yes.
... financial feasibility and some of those things as well. If it is a, if it is, if it's right-sized and it's an attractive, doable project, aren't we most likely to take the route and aren't we shooting for a competitive bid route? Because isn't that the best, most direct way towards, towards this process? And I guess what I'm getting at is, if it's a really attractive project, won't we, won't it, won't it be more marketable on the open market when we have a lot of players?
Yeah, I would speculate, and again, you're getting out of my specialty a little bit here.
Mine too.
Michelle might have more to say. I would speculate that if you should choose to go with government-backed, that you will definitely, well, not, won't say definitely, but probably do a competitive process in that particular case. But if you don't, and the risk is higher, it might be semi-attractive, but we say unrated sometimes in these projects because they're speculative, the rating is a problem and the risk is high enough that you can't do that. But if you can create a private placement situation, you can, you can get past that. And, but, but the issue is, is can you privately place the quantity of bonds all at one time or does it cause you to have to go in phases? And then if you divide it in phases, you don't know if you're going to get past the first phase to go to the second or the third. And then how do you chop up the project when you really want to do it all? So, those are some of the contemplations. And quite honestly, when we bring them on, the first thing, as we mentioned, will come back pretty soon, it'll be a contract between us and the company that's going to do the revenue projections. But once they're on board, we'll all be working together and looking at all the risks and all the structure questions and really get to the, to the real depth of the question you just asked, in addition to many other questions, and try to figure out the very best approach. And at the same time, be trying to work with Salina 2020 as we try to negotiate. They may have the same perspective of where we want to go, they may be a little bit different and we need to find a common ground and try to look at the risk issues associated with that. But I think, we think we can do that, but that's where we'll get to the details.
Okay. Yeah, and my main point from, I just didn't, I wanted to make sure that we would still remain open on, on the process by which we would be.
Yeah, and that's why, that's one of the reasons that this group really stood out is because we believe they give us the best opportunity to remain totally open with all the options.
And have they, have they had other Kansas STAR bond clients?
They have. I can't, I don't have them in front of me to name them. I don't want to misname a project, but they have.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't have looked at them if they hadn't.
Okay.
One question. I noticed, didn't notice until I read this again today, that Salina 2020 group was advised about this. We don't have a binding development agreement with that group.
That's correct.
What connection would they have with the actual selection of this? I mean, are they being involved at a stage earlier than they should, not being?
No, they weren't involved in interviewing or anything like that. We wanted to keep, continue communication as a courtesy since they represent, you know, our local community, local business people and so forth. So, we communicated as a courtesy just so they would be aware of where we're at, at this step, which we will need to do with all the steps. And we ask, have any issues, have any concerns, because it's good to know now versus later. They were comfortable with it, so it matched up with where we were already at.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the city manager to engage Stifel as the bond underwriter for the downtown redevelopment project.
Second. Have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to engage Stifel or Stifel, whichever way it is, as the bond underwriter for STAR bonds associated with the downtown redevelopment STAR bond project. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion carries. There's no development business. Anybody have any other business?
Commissioners, I do.
Oh, okay.
I'd forgotten last week to give you an update. You'd asked me to give you an update on the, Mr. Ficus, Bill Ficus had come to you and had requested support for the Christmas dinner that happens each year. And the total number was, it was communicated with $7,000 to have, in essence, to get it done this year. And the discussion was whether the city should contribute 3,500 and the county contribute 3,500. And we knew there were communications with the county before and we thought everybody was probably on the same page. But the county did deal with it last, or a week ago Tuesday, and they approved $750 rather than $3,500. And I asked the question, I said, "Well, wasn't 3,500 requested?" And they said 750 was all that was requested. That's what came from the county administrator. And I think Commissioner Shadwick was not at, was not at that particular meeting and Commissioner Larson had provided that information, but I did follow up and that's what they indicated. So, I'm not sure, Commissioner Blanchard, you might know more than I do at this point beyond that, but that's, that's what I know at this point based on that request. And my job is to report back what Saline County had or was going to do and that's all I know at this point.
Was there a request in writing any time or?
For us? No, the verbal request that came to you. And I'd spoken, he and Mr. Genison with the KSL, with the KSL News and the local radio group had come by, Alpha Media, I guess to be accurate, had come by some time ago. And so, I was aware that there was a need and they would come to the city at some point and potentially request. But the only request we have right now is what you had in the meeting.
Was there any additional information regarding how much of that was to write the books from his deficit from last year?
Only what he provided in the meeting. Yeah, we don't have anything additional.
Right. And did he submit a, just a basic financial summary of the operation? I mean, just, you know, expenses?
No, and to his credit, at this point, we didn't, we didn't require that or request that of him just because we weren't sure if you'd get to the point that you would need to ask. I didn't want to presume that on your behalf, so we didn't ask that of him. So, it was not a piece of homework that he missed. We just didn't ask for it yet.
Okay. Thank you for the follow-up on that.
I will say too, real quick, he'd, when he'd come by the office, I wasn't there at the time, and our office gave him some good recommendations and Rachel Hind in particular, who deals with our, a lot of our outreach stuff, is our community engagement coordinator. And I thought some of these were pretty good. One of them was to work with, well, let's see, develop a fundraising sheet that includes various sponsorship levels. Sometimes you see that and it gives folks an opportunity to give a little bit or a lot if they can and to then structure kind of who you're going to. But one I thought that was good is go to the community foundation for a grant and apply for a grant. Doesn't mean it's available. It's always something you do. Talked about utilizing potentially maybe the United Way and possibly even the, the Young Professionals Group and see if there's a possibility for some type of a local, oh, what do you call the fundraising, the crowdfunding, or some, some form of a crowdfunding approach to see. And recognizing that not, not all of us are great with all technology, that's where you would use Young Professionals or some other group to help with that. So, we did kind of give quite a few very, very good suggestions. I actually have no idea how many of those have been utilized or discussed or explored further. I don't know that. But I just wanted to let you know that the office was very helpful when I wasn't there. I always like that.
That's good.
I'm not there and people are really helpful. They were very, very helpful and gave them some ideas and that's, that's about all I know with that right now.
Good.
Well, I would just like to say, also thank you to staff for looking at that. I'd also like to thank fellow commissioners for entertaining the, the thought of doing that and everything. But kind of where I'm left on it is that, I don't know where everyone else is. I'd like to, I'd like to say, since, since the idea all along was let's partner with the county and do something nice, I would say if, if, if we could match their 750 and then just hopefully they'll be able to do some of the things that were suggested by Rachel Hind and, and hopefully that'll start to do it. And then if the county seems to revisit what they do, then I guess at that time we might revisit that. But I would just, I would just appreciate everybody's thinking about it and that if y'all see it to match the county, I think that'd be a nice gesture.
I'd agree with that. That's better than what he originally, what he originally wanted was with, he presented that without any paperwork at all or any idea of who he owed or from before. So, you know, I would, I would be willing to do that, so maybe we can.
That paperwork should be turned in. I would think if you're.
He should have something.
Give public funds, be nice to know.
Yeah, I think so too. And whatever, whatever the board feels is inadequate.
And who handles it? You know, he might, I'm sure he has two or three buddies or something that help him with that, but there ought to be something to let us know that.
Well, that fits, that's within the discretionary.
Yeah, I can, I can do that without anything too formal. And I think given, given the structure and all that, what we can do is, is we can communicate that. We could probably do that by a letter and that way we can outline kind of what your expectation is of basically, how would you like, you know, of the uses that they have, make sure it goes to what you would expect it to go to, which I don't think is a problem. Keep it fairly informal, but yet have some kind of formal communication and then can report back at the end so that we, that allows me then to report back to you and you know that it's been used that way and you can feel comfortable with that.
Yes, and I.
I would, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say what you suggest.
I would like it to be understood that it's not an ongoing contribution to his, it's just kind of a one-time hand-leg-up kind of a contribution.
I can communicate that. It doesn't guarantee you won't get a request next year.
Yeah, right.
No, that's a good point.